Good evening. I'm John Schneider. I'm a board member of LACNIP, that's Lima Allen County Neighborhoods in Partnership, which is a network of volunteer-based neighborhood associations in this community. Thank you for coming, and your speaking questions, and most of all, I do thank you for your participation in this event. I'll make some brief remarks, and then I'll get out of the way so candidates can speak. I thank the St. Luke's Lutheran Church for the use of their excellent facility. I think our timekeeper, Terry Saloney, from the Chamber of Commerce, and I think Bob Friedman, who's his usual role of working behind the scenes to make a community event successful. I'll make some brief comments about the highlights about our moderator, Dr. Matt Kinkley. He has a PhD from the University of Toledo. He's retired Director of Workforce and Economic Development for Rhodes State College. Matt and his wife live in the St. Mary's area, making him a neutral person for our debate tonight. Dr. Kinkley.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to give a welcome to our two candidates, right? Mr. Jamie Dixon and Mr. Todd Gordon. And it's always nice to start off with, gentlemen, thank you for coming and being a part of this election process. Just as a short review, we flipped a coin earlier, and Mr. Gordon will take the first question, and then we'll rotate back and forth between each question. There'll be a two-minute opportunity with each question and a one-minute follow-up. It doesn't mean each candidate needs to use all two minutes or all one minute, but they have that option. I'm going to ask that the candidates and the audience not interrupt the speakers as they speak, or cheer, or applaud them during the course of the conversation. We'll hold that at the end and make sure we recognize them for a job well done. Our timekeeper, Terry Saloney, will keep the information coming on the 1 minute 30 seconds, et cetera. We have some information to share that, one, let's be sure to silence our cell phones if you haven't done that already. I love the Star Spangled Banner being played during a debate, but if we can avoid that today, it would be okay. The rest of rooms are in the back of the room to the right, should anyone need them. And I've been told that the forum will be replayed on public access spectrum channel 1021, starting in mid-October, so you'll be able to reflect on what's been said tonight. The forum is also being streamed live on the Lima Allen County Neighborhoods in Partnership Facebook page, so you'll be able also to catch that information then. With that in mind, we're going to begin with our first question. And, Mr. Gordon, it will be your opportunity. Encourage you, if you need me to repeat it, just let me know. Same here. Start off with, why do you want to be the council president of the city of Lima? What qualifies you to do so? We'll start there.
Okay. Well, I've been on city council for 10 years. Why I want to be is, I'd like to take the opportunity to be able to help more people. My purpose on city council was given to me a long time ago by the Lord. And I've been able to talk to so many people, been able to work with so many people in the First Ward, and obviously I have a love for the folks. And so this would extend my landscape, to be able to work with a lot more people and to help them. What qualifies me is my experience. I've been on council for 10 years. I've been on every single committee that we have. And I'm also on the Regional Planning Commission, the Community Development Committee, and I've learned a lot working with people through that. And so I'm just excited to have the opportunity.
I'll just ask both candidates to pull the microphone close to you, so that it can be captured on the Facebook page and heard by our crowd. Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
The answer to your question, you asked me, why would I want to be on city council or the city council president, and what qualifies me to be that individual? So, my name is Jamie Dixon, and I believe that I should be your next city council president due to the fact that I would like to continue to serve our community. Serving our community in the capacity of the president of city council means bridging the gaps, bridging the gaps between the generation before us and the generation after us, as well as my generation. Making sure that we bring together qualitative solutions, as well as innovative solutions, to new and old issues. What makes me qualified? Well, what makes me qualified? I have a bachelor's degree in travel hospitality. I also have a master's degree in business administration with a concentration in public administration. I've sat on city council for six years. I've been the head or the chair of safety services, as well as neighborhood concerns, and I have been co-members with the others committees that we have. I serve on the LCIC, which is the Lima Incorporated Improvement Corporation for the city of Lima, as well as I've worked with United Way in making sure that we can allocate funds in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon, any other comments?
No.
All right. We'll proceed with the second question. It will come to you, sir.
Yes, sir.
As we are here tonight with the neighborhood association, what do you see as a city's role with the neighborhood association, and how have you been active in volunteerism in the past in our community?
So I believe that neighborhood associations and LACNIP is very vital in our community. When I started campaigning six years ago for the role to be the city council for the Fifth Ward, I worked very closely with LACNIP. We made sure that we'd had block patrol, safety patrol, we did some cleanups, we did different walks in the areas, as well as the neighborhoods. Currently, you could see LACNIP is having a very great program where they're engaging our youth in our community. And this is one thing that I believe that is very essential, is making sure that we not only, again, grasp the generations before, but making sure that we grasp the generations that comes after. In this notion, they are teaching them to harvest, they are teaching them what it is to plant a seed, to grow a seed, because we each know that everything starts with the seed. We may see those things in nature, and we may see them blossom and bloom, and then there's sometimes when we don't see that seed blossom at all, but somebody comes along to water it. And so as we're continuing the partnership between the city, which we have a neighborhood specialist that should be working closely with the neighborhood associations, as well as LACNIP, we need these entities in our community, as well as, I have worked with individuals in this congregation this evening, to make sure that we can actually start our own neighborhood association. So volunteerism is very important to my heart, as well should be to this community.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes. I was previously a member of the North Side Neighborhood Association, which doesn't exist anymore, and I've worked on neighborhood cleanups, and like Jamie, been involved with many things. I believe that we need to continue to support the neighborhood associations and help them in any way that we can, so we can advance the movement. We need to work harder to recruit more people, get more people involved in things like the neighborhood associations. As you can see tonight, the sparse crowd, so it would benefit the people to be able to be a part of things like this. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else, Jamie?
Yes. I would like to add that even when it comes to neighborhood associations and LACNIP and the organization in which they have, we also have to make sure that we have key players in line with the organization that believes in the mission, vision, and values of that organization. But we also have to make sure that those individuals that are working within that organization are friendly and welcoming to new ideas, as well as new people joining the board to bring these innovative ideas to our community.
Mr. Gordon, anything else? The next question will be for Mr. Gordon. And just as a reminder, these questions have come from members of the audience, and so I'm trying to organize them and put some together, because sometimes they're related topics, and it makes sense that they be combined, like in this one. What do you see, what is your vision for the city of Lima? And what do you see as Lima's greatest asset and greatest deficit? If you need me to repeat that, Lima's greatest asset and deficit, and your vision?
Okay. My vision for the city of Lima is for Lima to become a great place to raise a family, a great place to grow business, to continue to have A1 safety services and support that all the time, for Lima citizens to have safe, affordable housing. We create an environment that becomes new to business, so that welcomes new business, so Lima people can enjoy a prosperous community. We have safe, friendly, clean neighborhoods. We have positive leaders who can lead by example and create a positive culture that will make Lima better, and also make a healthier region for Allen County and all the townships as well. As far as the greatest assets of the city, one thing that I really, really want to reflect on in my time are the people that work for the city. The people that we have in the city are tremendous. They're awesome, and we need to continue to support those individuals, and, you know, all of them. You know, a lot of people always mention the police and the firefighters, and they're just an awesome asset. But we also have a wonderful utilities department, we have a wonderful public works department, and the people that are leading those groups, they're awesome. So, you know, that's what I consider our top asset, and probably something that we need to work on more is to help fight the crime in the city of Lima. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. So my vision for Lima is to create a place that is safe and comfortable, but where families can live and work and play. With working here in this area, we got to make sure that we have livable wages, jobs that will actually help our economic stability in our communities. This is where, when we have income and when we have stability in our economic stability, we can have houses that come into our community. We also have to make sure, again, as Mr. Gordon stated, safer and clean neighborhoods. With having safe and clean neighborhoods, we got to make sure that we have, get rid of the blight. When I speak about blight, I just don't speak about homes. I want to make sure that we have adequate curbs, sidewalks, infrastructure when it comes to drainage, lighting. And even though we may be down 10 to plus officers on our safety service committee or our safety services with the police department, we also have to make sure that we're able to recruit new officers. So the vision that I want to have, the vision that I have for Lima, and the vision that I would like to carry out as city council president, is to make sure that we create an environment that is safe for all to work, live, and play. Our greatest asset, because I know I have one minute, our greatest asset for this Lima community is the people of Lima. It is the neighbors. And so with neighbors joining together, binding together, and doing things that neighborly love do, as the Bible says, "Each one teach one," and it also teaches us to treat each other according to the way we would like to be treated. So when we talk about our community, we also have to talk about cleanliness, but also our neighborhoods and the people in our neighborhoods. So I would sell people, our people, because we also have the people that lives within our wards, but we also have great easeways into the city limits of Lima.
Mr. Gordon, anything additional?
No. No, thank you.
We'll proceed with the next question for Mr. Dixon. What strategies do you have in place or will put in place to hear the needs of the Lima city residents, and, as Mr. Gordon just mentioned, curb violence in our city?
All right. So I'm going to answer your second part of your question first, so part B. When we talk about violence, we also have to look at how we've changed in safety services. So being the head of the safety services committee, let me talk about those changes for a moment. So the safety service committee, what we've also met with our police department, as well as our current mayor and chief, we eliminated pinpoint policing. And now we are going to a policing system that we are patrolling the beat. Anyone that lives within the area, we have cut our, we've cut our city into four quadrants, or four corridors. And so they patrol that corridor all three shifts. Those officers are patrolling those shifts first, second, and third shift, so that residents in those neighborhoods are able to identify who those officers are, but those officers are also knowing who those residents are. Just a couple weeks ago, we had an incident where we had a lady that was a resident of the Fifth Ward, and we have a client, or I should say resident, that is of the Fifth Ward, and we have a police officer who is there, and he noticed that her light had not been on for several nights. He was able to identify that her son was coming in and out of this house, and so he was able to see that the resident had been in the hospital for quite some time. And the first part of your question was, again, "Dr. Was?"
Yes. It was, "What strategies do you have in place or will put in place to hear the needs of Lima city residents?"
Putting things into place for the citizens of Lima. I would like to take city council outside of the four walls of City Hall. I would like for city council to go into the neighborhoods, its schools, community halls, and host their meetings, so that the people in those areas and throughout our city can be involved in the politics, and also in the local government, in which it's paid by the city taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Well, I have a great communication with the residents of Lima, and the first thing that I do is I answer my phone. And if I don't answer my phone, if I'm in the middle of a meeting or something, I call people back. And, you know, we need to keep, open the doors of communication. We need to be available, and I'm available 24/7. Second half of your question is, we need to curb the violence. We need to get rid of blighted housing. We need to continue to support the added street lighting that the mayor is working well on. We need to continue, we need to bring back community policing substations. I was involved the last time that we brought the community policing back. I met what they were called, then called the Black Ministers, myself and Councilor Tevin, and there were concerns with racial concerns. And together, Mr. Tevin and I worked hard with the ministers, and we brought back the community policing through Mayor Berger. And I believe in that program, and I'd like to see the substations come back. They were taken out during COVID, so I want to see those stations come back. We also need to raise the pay of the police department. We need to be able to attract more officers. It's a tough battle getting plenty of police officers, so we need to be able to raise the pay, so we can get more qualified applicants. And finally, we need to get rid of our promote-only-from-within policy that we have in the city of Lima. We need to be able to open that up and to be able to bring more qualified leaders into the city from police departments across the nation. That's all I have.
Mr. Dixon, anything else?
Yes. I would like to add, when you talk about crime rate, our crime rate is down. Burglary is down 41%, robbery is down 75%. The only thing that is up currently, according from July of last year to July of this year, is assault. And so I would say we are deterring crime from our neighborhoods. The old saying or the old belief was that downtown was not safe. If it wasn't safe, people wouldn't be making investments into our downtown area. We also, we have also, from our community standpoint or organization of the city, we have accredited a system called the FLOC system. The FLOC system was a system that also assisted us with finding the individuals that broke out of Allen County Correctional Institution. It has also helped us in many other ways, as well as when it comes to a murder in our city. We was able to identify where that car was and where it was headed by using the FLOC system. When we talk about training for officers or officers in our area, we do reach out beyond the city limits, because now citizens or people can go to testing sites nationally known or nationally wide, and they can test to become an officer.
Mr. Gordon, anything to add? Not today. Thank you. Our next question will be for Mr. Gordon. And there seems to be a lot of interest in this topic, so I'll start with a broad base, and we may have some questions that follow up to this one, all right? Code enforcement, zoning, and the mayor's rental registration for rental property owners have been an issue recently and in the past. What priorities do you have for this, and why?
Well, I intend to support the registration program. What I didn't like before is I don't want, when I've been, I've been out campaigning, and when I was campaigning six years ago, the concerns of the citizens were, all the things that the city of Lima was coming up with that was going to cost people money on their rent. I mean, 75% of the doors that I knocked on, people were scared to death. And I'm there to represent those people, so I didn't want to see their rents get raised up. So six years ago, I wasn't for it, and the original plan, I wasn't for. But the one with the free registration, I am for. That, you know, and I also am for, let's target the bad landlords. Let's not target all the landlords. Let's not put them under the same, I mean, you can't do that with anybody. You can't do that with any example you want to give. I just think that we need to work on having the landlords that are bad. We need to attack them, and as far as the ones that are good, we need to give them incentives to keep doing the right thing. That's all I have right now.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. So with respect to code enforcement, code enforcement, we currently have four code enforcers. And I would say, with having and living in an area which is the Fifth Ward, which was heavily utilized the code enforcement over the last six years of my tenure, I can tell you now, we have two code enforcer officers that seize the north side of Vine Street and see the south side of Vine Street going south into Fourth Street, and I can tell you, we have two heck of a gentleman that is making sure that our neighborhoods are clean and safe, and that is Rod and Lamar. The other two gentlemen, I don't know for sure, because I have not worked with them, I probably have worked with them in the past, Nick and Sean. And they did a heckable job when it comes to making sure that we had clean and safe neighborhoods. Building and coding, we are doing an excellent job, seeming that we have secured our relationship or strengthened our relationship with our county chair. When it comes to landlord registry, I was a champion of the landlord registry then, and I am a champion of the landlord registry now. The reason why is because after seven years of working in housing, I know that individuals are living in subpar housing. Subpar housing, where there's a lack of ventilation system or HVAC, where there's lead abatement in the house, messing with children, the healths of our senior citizens, as well as making sure that we have electrical that works and water that flows for residents. I am a champion of making sure that we have adequate roofs over individuals' heads, especially when they're paying their monies to live somewhere. Now, what I will tell you is, under the performance base of this program, we are not calling them good or bad tenants. We're calling them highly performance or lowly performance clients, or tenants, or registry for that. And with this program, it will not cost the residents anything, it will not cost the landlords anything. But we also need to make sure that we can have them registered, so that in case of something happens with our safety services or anything of that nature, it be fire, police, or utilities, that we can contact whoever the manager is of those properties, so that we can make sure that we have adequate services that are being provided to the citizens of Lima.
Mr. Gordon, do you have another follow-up?
Just the other officer's name is Brandon, it's not Sean. And that's it.
Anything additional for your last 30 seconds?
No.
All right. We'll continue, and this question will be for Mr. Dixon. Kind of continuing down the same line, Lima has at least 40% or more rental percentages of properties than the rest of the state, and this seems to be growing. Are you okay with this, and how do you think we should address it?
How we can address it is, we have to work closely with agencies, not just local agencies, but nationally-known agencies, to make sure that we can have adequate in housing come about. And this is working with developers for economic development for housing. When it comes to rentals, we know that there's going to be some people that are just simply going to have to rent. They don't want to be homeowners. That's not their goal. They're okay with renting. We know that we have majority of our employment workforce here in the area is either in factories or in healthcare. And so we do know that with healthcare, that turnover is very rapid, especially when people come into our communities, and this being an educated town with colleges and universities, we do know that with research that Mercy Health is doing in our area, it's going to bring in students that are here for residencies. And so they're not long-term, they're just transplanted for a short period of time. And so those individuals are going to move out. But however, how we can strengthen those is, we did that by working with NACA. We've done that with work, making sure that we can work with our landlords as they have inventory, that they can actually take from being renters to making their tenants homeowners, and preparing them for things to become homeowners, which is the American dream, which is also the dream in which my family, mother and father, who's in the audience, did when they were young.
Mr. Gordon?
Yeah. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Lima has at least 40% more rental percentage than the rest of the state, and this is growing. Are you okay with this, and how do you think we should address it in the future?
Well, addressing it in the future, we need to have incentive programs, and we do have some programs that will help people become first-time home buyers, help individuals get loans, help get them, be able to get loans without down payment, or at least low down payments. And like Jamie said, we do need to work with the landlords and have them help to make homeowners in this community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, anything else?
Yes. I would like to add, we also have to make sure that our administration, as well as council, is working very hand-in-hand with our land bank. Just recently, we spent a lot of money acquiring our properties back from Allen County, which is the county seat in this. That is getting on my nerves. And so with acquiring those properties, we need to make sure that we can have these properties available and up for sale at a low cost, especially when individuals are looking to come into our community and do infield development when it comes to our housing and neighborhood department. We also have to make sure that we let them know that there's tax incentives when it comes to building within our community and within our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, anything to add?
No.
The next question will be for you, sir. Mr. Gordon?
Okay.
It's kind of a continuation on the housing and rental component. First, it's actually, there's three individuals put questions in, and I'm trying to tie them together a little bit. As we look at Lima's rental costs, they seem to be high. Do we have an understanding of why that might be? And how do we work to encourage more home ownership in the city of Lima?
Well, actually, the cost of housing has gone up. It's gone up everywhere across the nation, like everything else that we deal with. The cost of housing, though in Lima, is still lower than it is across the country, the cost of rent. But, like everything else, the cost of repairing things, the cost of labor to do those repairs, the cost of individuals, the cost has gone up, and, you know, that's what we got to work to keep that down. We have people in this town that are struggling, and we need to do everything that we can to help those individuals. But as far as the cost goes, yeah, it has gone up, but we are still lower than the nation's standard.
Mr. Dixon, anything?
Yes. So our rental rates has went up. Six years ago, when we talked about a landlord registry, landlords threatened to take rent rates up, right? And so a lot of the tenants were afraid of what this landlord registry would cost, or would it be, because it would cost their rates to go up. Lo and behold, nothing passed through City Hall, and rates went up anyway, right? And so what we have to get to a place, and this is what I talked about a few weeks ago from council floor, is we have to make sure that we're not creating a culture where rent rates are going up and individuals have to choose between groceries and their local medications that they're being prescribed. That is a quality of life. But also, when we talk about rent rates going up, we also have to ask ourselves, have the quality of houses went up? And that question is true as well. Some of our housing stock, which was very poor in the beginning when we did the Harceny Study in 2020, is a lot better than what it was. And some of those bad performance, or lower-performance landlords, got out of the business because they were afraid. Now, what we do have to ask ourselves is, why is the rate going up when individuals haven't done anything to their homes, and they're still jacking rates up? So then that's where we have the issue at. Home ownership, I think we answered that question with working with LACNIP. With LACNIP... Lack, um, with, with NACA, um, in making sure that we can create homeowners, but also the different initiatives that the city already have with first-time homeowners, but also making sure that we are getting them on a verge, and working with WOCA, to make sure that they are, um, financially stable to be able to be homeowners, but also educating them on the, on the purposes of what it is to be a homeowner, knowing that there's repairs that we have to make sure that we're making as we live in these homes. Because we do know that when things are lived in, they do deteriorate over time.
Mr. Gordon, anything additional?
No.
No? Mr. Dixon, the next question will be for you. As we've been talking about policies and new initi, issues that exist in the city of Lima, what new issues or policies are needed for the city of Lima from your perspective as the potential future council president?
As the council president, what, the first thing that I would like to do is create a committee to, to review our city charter. There's a lot of things that are within our city charter, um, that are outdated, that's outdated, and so, we need to make sure that we take a view of that. I think one of the initiatives also was brought up even last night at city council floor, is how is it is that we as odd ward counselors, meaning one, four, one, three, five, and seven, how we can't run, well, how we can run for city council president, but those of the even wards have to give up their seats to be able to run for that seat. Um, and so, looking at our charter, but that charter also has to go to the voters, um, to, to make sure that change can actually happen. So, the first thing I would like to do is review a lot of our policies and procedures, um, that is within our charter, so that we can make sure that we create an atmosphere, but also create a charter that is feasible to today's days and time.
Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, yeah, we did discuss that last night, and, and we discussed the doing, uh, looking at charter changes, and I, I agree with that. I think that's the right thing to do, to give everybody opportunities to advance in leadership. Um, some of the, uh, some of the things that I'd like to see changed as far as policy changes, uh, maybe it's not a policy change, but, you know, we, we need to work hard to, uh, you know, stay, uh, in tune with what we're doing on the council floor. Uh, we need to work hard to follow the rules, and we're working on those rules. Um, one of the things that I'd like to see change, uh, and, and I would consult the other counselors of this, but I'd like to see, back when I first started, we had the opportunity to be on the, uh, they, we changed committees a lot, and over the last several years, we've stayed on the same committee, so I'd like to see the counselors, so everybody can get more experience as I did when we were younger, when I was younger. Uh, the, I'd like to see moving around as far as the committees that all the counselors are on. And we get comfortable when we're, we're on one, one committee, so I want to see us, uh, you know, move around, change, learn. It helps you learn to be on the other committee, so that's just one of the things I'd like to implement.
Mr. Dixon, do you have a second? Mr. Gordon, anything else?
No.
Next question will be for you, sir. What can be done to recruit minorities for employment within the city of Lima?
Well, the city of Lima is working hard right now to recruit minorities. Um, but we, one of the things that we can do as leaders is we can get out and we can help. We can be a part of the recruiting. Um, we can go to neighborhood meetings, we can go to, uh, go out and talk to people, we can go out and recruit ourselves, and, and try to bring in as many people as we can, so we have good choices, uh, with our employees. For the, the struggles that we've had, uh, hiring people, uh, we, we have a tremendous, uh, staff with the city, but we need to stay involved. And you can do that as council president, you know, I'm, I'm retired, I have the time that I can get out and be a part of, of helping and assisting with that. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. What can be done to recruit more minorities for employment within the city of Lima?
At the current time, I will be honest with you all, I don't believe there's anything that we can improve to, to deliver those services or bringing individuals of minority race into the community, into our, um, organization. The reason why I say that is because when you look at our streets department, it is made up of a mixed culture that looks just like what this room looks like, which ultimately looks like our community. Um, one thing that we did do in the past is, we took away the rule of ten. And so, as people are, or, yeah, as people are, um, completing the tests and also, um, passing those tests, we're able to go ahead and get those interviews started. Um, but just a few weeks ago, we talked about this as well from council, and we also talked about how, what I was talking about a little earlier was, uh, when people come out of, um, the army or the military, they can go into a national testing site right now and test to become a member or, um, for an opening position with the city of Lima. And so, we've opened that up, which is also causing our safety services to have to do a little more work than normal, um, because we're testing all the time. Um, a few years ago, when we were looking for police officers, I do believe that I brought twenty-one African-American men to a meeting that was held at the Bradfield Center. But the sad part about it is, we don't have a problem with individuals passing the test when it comes to testing. We have issues when it comes to them having to pass the drug test, or the physical test. And so, one thing that we have to make sure is, we're talking to individuals about making sure that they're not using illicit drugs, um, even if it is, um, recreational, things of that nature, and being able to be fit so that they can ultimately pass the test that is required. I do believe just a couple of months ago, we had a female individual who tested to be a police officer, and she scored very high, and she completed the test, and was able to pass the UDS test. And so, but what she chose to do is to stay home to raise her four children, her two children, because her children had the notion in their minds that their mom, their mom was going to go out to, to serve her community and may not return to them, and so, they were scared, and they pleaded, and they begged her. So, we also have to change the directory.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, anything to add? Mr. Dixon, anything to add?
Yes. We also have to change the directory, um, that becoming a, a officer of our community or a, a police officer in our community is not bad. We have to teach our kids that they can be doctors, they can be lawyers, they can be firefighters, but ultimately, they can be police officers in our own community and patrol the streets in which they grew up in, and create a safe environment for all.
We're moving into our tenth question, and this will be directed towards Mr. Dixon. How would you assess the state of racial relations in the city of Lima?
How would I address racial relations in the city of Lima?
Address slash assess?
Address and assess.
Yes.
Okay. We do know that we live in America, right? And with living in America, we're going to face racism, racism, from the south to the north, to the east, to the west, no matter where you go. But however, you have to stand true to the, the values of your life, the foundation in which you grew up on. Um, one thing that I, I applaud my parents is, my parents, they showed me and my brothers and all of my cousins who lived in the house with us at once upon a time, not to see color. We see people, and we see them for their hearts. And that's the reason why me and Todd, even though we're, we're opponents tonight, we can be friends once this is over with, because we, we have a built relationship. And, and so, addressing racial relations or issues in this community, it's going to start with communication. I think communication is, is a large part of the issues that we have. Um, people are brought up in different walks of life. When you look around our community, even just this past weekend, we had a, a multicultural fest that took place in our ample theater, and there was people from all walks of life down there, and people was learning about those cultures. And so, it comes down to simply educating and communication, but ultimately, building a relationship between those entities, so that they know how each other function. It's no different than when you go to college and they stick you in a dorm room with individuals that you just don't know. How you build those relationships? You sit down, you have dinner, you build those relationships, you have a cup of coffee or a cup of tea or a soda, in my case, it was Mountain Dew, and we built those relationships. And now, I have last, long-lasting relationships that is way beyond my tenure of International Business College, and, and, and my best man at my wedding was my best friend from college, who just so happens to be a, a Latino. So, building those relationships, having an open line of communication, but willing to have a conversation and learn each other's cultures.
Mr. Gordon?
Well, like Jamie, I was raised, uh, myself, not, uh, I, I don't really see black and white. My wife and I are interracial marriages. Um, our kids, I have five white sons and three black daughters. Did I say five? I have four. Sometimes it feels like five because of my dog.
Who's counting?
To be real honest with you. Yeah, because my dog acts like he's one of our sons. But, you know, uh, we was raised, just not to see, uh, not to see a difference, uh, it's, it's in the heart. And so, uh, you know, as far as addressing it, I don't know that there's, you know, like Jamie says, it is good to have good, open communication, uh, but, you know, in the long run, you know, we as individuals, when we spend time with one another and see, you know, hey, we're not all that different. It goes Republicans, Democrats, it goes from black and whites and Latinos, I mean, people are not different. And one of the things that you, take a look at, if you look at our, our, uh, team, our campaign team, uh, say, when we were walking in the parade, take a look at our team. I mean, we have, uh, white folks, we have black folks, we have men, women, young, old, I mean, we have a great diversity just in our own campaign team, and that wasn't by design, uh, it's just what happens, it's the people that are around me. Larry's uncle was my best friend, you know, right?
Yeah.
And that's why we can't be enemies, right?
You're right.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, it's just, it's just, it's real simple, it's just how you treat people, and it's what God intended us to do. And that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, anything else?
Yes. With dealing with racial relations, if we see that even in our organization, we have to call it to the forefront. One thing that I, my parents have always taught me is, if you see something, say something. And so, when you know that something is unjust, and it's not right, and it's unfair, you speak up. And that's one thing that I pride myself on. Um, I, I'm going to speak up, I'm going to have a backbone, I'm going to advocate that we do not have this in our departments, that we do not have this in our organization. And if you want to have that in your heart, then maybe this organization is just not for you. We have to create the culture that we want to see for this community, but ultimately for our organizations.
Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, Jamie's right, it's something we absolutely can't stand for, and that's all I have there.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next question will start with, uh, Mr. Gordon. Going to change, uh, course a little bit, uh, as you have some esteemed colleagues in the audience today. How should the city and the county work together differently, and give some examples of your plans for a better working relationship?
Well, I don't know that recently we need to work differently, because we are working together. You know, Beth, there with the county commissioners and the mayor, they've, they've opened the door. Where the, the county and the city wouldn't work together, we have many projects going on between the city and the county, and, and I have to applaud, uh, the current commissioners and the mayor, uh, for, for putting these projects, uh, in the forefront. I believe that when, when you, uh, work together for the common good, for the people that are in this audience, and for the people of the city of Lima and the county, uh, you can do great things. Uh, when you're not communicating, and when you're not wanting to work together, that's when you have a problem. Uh, and we may have had that, and, you know, we did have that in the past, but things have changed. Leadership has changed, you have more open-minded leaders, and, uh, and I'm very grateful for that, and, uh, I want to continue to be a part of that. I mean, we shared our meetings with, uh, we, we went to a meeting with the commissioners at their place, and they went to a meeting at ours. So, things are going really well. Um, and, and I, again, I want to continue to do that, and I, I'll be able to, uh, attend those meetings all the time, I, and I'd like to. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dixon?
Could you restate the question for me, please?
Sure. How should the city and county work together differently, and give some examples of your plans for better relationships there?
How the county and the city can work differently than what they currently are working, right?
Correct.
Is what you're asking, okay.
Correct, yeah.
I, I would echo the sentiments of Todd, who talks about, we have an open relationship. The door is open for the county, and, and fifty town squares open. Um, one thing that I liked about that is, we extended the invitation to our county commissioners, and they came before council and sat within one of our meetings, and then it was a few short weeks later, they extended the, the, the offer or the, the invitation to us to be able to, and at this point, the mayor took not only city council, but she also took all of the administration over, um, into their, their meeting, where we were able to have open dialect. And that is where the conversation of us, the city purchasing back some of our land bank lands from the county, is where that, where that conversation started. Um, and how we seen it end was, the city now controls, um, those land opportunities that we once had. Um, how can we strengthen that? I would say that we can talk about not just land, but let's talk about housing. We do know that here in our city, um, one of the things that they talked about was, just about six thousand houses need to be renovated, and that was in our Harceny Study. But we also know that there's about sixteen twenty-one, I do believe, one thousand six hundred and twenty-one houses that needs to be brought into the city limits of Lima. Um, and so, working together to make sure that we can have this house, so that as our population continues to grow, and young individuals come out, come back home, and, and return to this area to work at the likes of Procter &amp; Gamble, Ford, Dana, Tank Plant, Husky, or the, Nisova, um, that they have adequate houses that is within our neighborhoods to strengthen that, because we also know that when neighborhoods thrive, our downtown thrive. We spend a lot of money making sure private and public dollars to make sure that our downtown areas, um, have, have been able to flourish and thrive, which we can see that with Main and Spring and all the other developments that is coming downtown. But we also need to take that same partnership, working with Edge and, um, the county, as well as the city, and put in our things together to make sure that we can have adequate housing for all in the city of Lima.
Mr. Gordon, anything additional?
No.
Mr. Dixon, anything additional?
No, thank you.
The next question will start with Mr. Dixon. Not only is there an election that includes the two of you in November, there are some statewide issues on the ballot, and the community members are interested on your, uh, views on the abortion reproductive rights issue that will be on the ballot, and the legislation, uh, in regards to legalization of marijuana.
So, I'm going to answer the first person, the first part for issue one. This is what I will say. I have no dog in the fight, I'm not a female. But what I will tell you is, what my religious beliefs are, and then what I also feel this right thing for us as citizens. My religious belief says that, um, God gives life, and he's the only person that can take life, right? And that's my religious beliefs. But what I also know is, from my religious beliefs, is that the God that I serve, and that hopefully you all serve, he's a God that gives us his will, and also gives us free will. And so, I believe that is a choice that each and every individual has to do a little search, soul-searching, to ask themselves, is this is right for that? I don't believe that this is anything that Todd and I can equate to, because we are men, and we don't have the right to tell a woman what she or they can do with, with their bodies, or their reproductive systems. We just can't speak to that, because we are men. Second, um, being a drug counselor myself, um, and being in this entity for the last five years, um, with the legalization of marijuana and making it, um, legal for individuals of twenty-one and older, I mean, at the end of the day, we did it years ago with, with alcohol, we did it with tobacco, and so, I believe, again, that is a choice that in every individual has to choose. Marijuana is not my, not my thing, so, again, I don't have a dog in the fight there. Um, I believe that is up to those individuals, and ultimately, is on the ballot for the individuals in this community and statewide, to go to the ballots on. At the end of the day, it is the rights of the people, and so, it's, it's in the hands of the people, it's on the ballot, and they can vote yes for it, they can vote no for it, at the end of the day.
Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, as far as issue one goes, um, you know, I, as Jamie said, um, you know, the Lord, he's the, he's the one that chooses life, and I, I tell you, I really, uh, been looking at this issue one, and I'm not at all in favor of what they're trying to do. To me, it's the other side of the issue one that we just dealt with, is they're just pushing it way too far. Um, they're, they're talking about taking life, uh, up to the, the, up to the, to the birth, up to when the child can be born, nine months into the pregnancy. And, you know, I, I, how can you be for something like that? I, I just, there's no way. Uh, so, uh, I'm going to say no on issue one, uh, as if it's anybody's business but my own, but I am going to say no on issue one. And then, also, I'm going to say no on issue two, is that the, uh, the, uh, just making marijuana more available, uh, is, is ludicrous, and it's, it's, I know people say it's going to cause peaceful, uh, you know, that it's peaceful for people and things like that, but I just, I, I think it causes more problems, and I don't want to see, uh... But I think it causes more problems, and I don't want to see issue two pass as well. Now, I am all for 100% medical use of marijuana. I've seen it with family, I've seen it with people with cancer, and that may be the real purpose that marijuana was put on this earth from the good Lord. You know, every year, bearing seed is a gift from God. So, that's, to me, that's what I believe the purpose of that drug is. It's to, maybe for medical reasons, and to help with people that are going through things like cancer. But as far as recreational, I don't think we need to have it. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Gordon, anything else?
No.
The next question will be for Mr. Gordon. There is a thought that the population of Lima is declining. What can be done to attract people to move to Lima?
Well, again, we need to continue, I mean, there's plenty of jobs out there, and there's plenty of good jobs. But we need to continue making Lima a better place, as Jamie said earlier. And this is one focus that I really want to see. We need to focus on the neighborhoods now. We have downtown looking great. It's in the process of just a great improvement. Life is downtown on Saturday night now. So, I think we need to shift our focus more into the neighborhoods and work on, as we do with regional planning, bringing in money to help the neighborhoods, like we did six or seven years ago over on Northwest Street, how we brought in, if you drive down there, you look at all the sidewalks that were put in, and the curbs, and the streets, and the paving. So, we need to work with places, with our federal government, with the different politicians from the state, with the ones from the federal government, and work on bringing in money to improve our neighborhoods, to pave the roads, to have new sidewalks, to have curbs, and just beautify the area so that people will be happy to live in those areas. And that's pretty much it, yeah.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes. So, when we speak about population declining, our population is declining. It is declining because individuals that are young have left the area, some have stayed in the area. But one thing that holds true is always statistics. And what our statistic shows us is that right now, a younger population means a population that is increasing in technical skills, high energy and optimism, and as well as workforce development. When you talk about, and you look at the statistics, statistics will show you even in the Harseny study that we did in 2020, it talks about our population is a younger population. It also talks about, when you look at the median age of households, it is about 34.3, which puts me right in the midst of it, right? And so, one thing that I also want to talk about is when we're knocking on doors, back then, and even when I knock on doors today, we hear individuals say, "I have no place to go with my kids. I have nothing to do with my kids," here in the Lima area. When you talk to young professionals that are traveling in from Findlay, they're saying, "The reason why I did not move to Lima is because there's not much for me to do as a young professional. There's no places that I can frequent, that I can have a jazz or speak easy." When you talk to young children, the reason why they say they get in trouble is because it's simply nothing to do. A couple of months ago, we, the city, we put in an application for an entertainment district. And we widened that entertainment district up from Grand Street down Main Street to 4th Street. And so, with that entertainment district, we're hoping that we have opened up the rings for businesses and entertainment things to come about, so that young people would have things to do in our neighborhoods, as well as not just in our downtown areas. Once upon a time, there used to be a place that you would be able to walk to in your own neighborhood, that you can go get a supper, a beer, a soft drink, play arcade games, and things of that nature. Those days are no longer. And so, we have to re-event what we want here. And that is the reason why it's really important that we bring not just the generation of the past, but the current... That's all right.
Mr. Gordon, would you have anything to add?
No.
I'll take thirty seconds. So, that's the reason why we have to make sure that we get our previous generations, our current generation and the generations to come, and get them to a table, so that that generation that is coming about, they can let us know what they want to see. If we continue to allow individuals who are 70, 80, 90 years old, as we see in our federal politics, create the laws, then we're going to be lost in time. We have to raise up for a new generation and make it accessible for them. So, because at the end of the day, we've lived our living. My grandmother, my grandfather, they've lived their lives. But now, we have to create a lives that are going to be for the next generations to come.
Thank you. The next question will be led by Mr. Dixon. It is important that the new aquatics center, swimming and pod, it looks like, be affordable. Is it important that the new aquatic center be affordable? And I'm assuming here they're referring to the individuals that would go to it, et cetera.
So, yes, I do believe that the aquatic center needs to be affordable. The reason why I believe that it has to be affordable goes back to the previous question. We have to make sure that we have places for our young kids to go, to be able to have entertainment. But also, this place can be utilized as a gathering place for teenagers. I know that one thing that my parents, my parents, they only let us go to schoolovers a handful of times. One, because it was so far away from home. They didn't trust us to drive all the way across town on our bikes, nor did they trust us to walk, because the time that they did catch us walking, we walked across to Cory, right? And so, we know what that came down, a punitive punishment from our parents, right? And so, when it comes to making sure that it's feasible, we have to make sure that it is reasonable for all individuals in our city limits of Lima, especially when you look at the median household income. The median household income is based off of a one person's income, which is normally either a single mother or a single father, which is about $34,000, in the median range. And so, therefore, we have to keep this reasonable, so that individuals will have a place to go. But we also want to make sure that we have an aquatic center or a place for individuals to go, because we do realize that when we did not, or as we currently don't, individuals were traveling to other cities to do this, and they were unwelcome. And so, we want to create an environment where all are welcome, but at a reasonable price.
Mr. Gordon?
In the planning for the aquatic center, all along, it's been a part of the plan to make it reasonable and feasible for everybody to be able to enjoy the swimming pool, the new swimming pool and aquatic center. From day one, when we started talking about this entertainment center, it's been the plan from the mayor on down to city council. And so, you know, I can't see where anybody has any plans to make it anything other than that. It's a place that we need to have. You know, frankly, when we started talking about this, I wanted to jump out of my seat. And yes, we're putting a lot of money into it. But, you know, like Jamie said, we need to have things for people to do. We need to have things for the young teenagers to be able to do. And we also need to have this facility for our schools, for all the schools around Lima, the colleges, the high schools. It's an amazing facility, and I support it 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Gordon, anything else? This question will be addressed to Mr. Gordon first. As you look at the current council, how will you work to increase the effectiveness as council as its president?
Well, I happen to think the council is pretty effective. And we actually, even though we disagree at times on some things, we are actually pretty united, and we are able to disagree and still get along pretty well. You know, through my time on council, I've seen different things where, you know, you've been pushed to, you've been pushed to be for or against something that you don't believe. And during that time, they found out a little bit about Todd Gordon. Yes is yes, and is no is no. So, you know, as a leader of council, you know, I will continue that and encourage the council to believe that way itself. I mean, we don't want to get up, we're nonpartisan anyway, but we don't want to get caught up in partisan politics being on city council. It's pretty good right now, but I've seen it in the past where partisan politics played a role. And so, you know, as the leader of council, I continue to encourage all of the council members to work together and to understand that, you know, a good, healthy conversation, good disagreement is good. We can't all agree all the time. And if you do, you got a problem, you know? I mean, I don't agree with my wife all the time, you know? And yes, she's probably always right, but you know, that's just how it goes. So, you know, again, I'd encourage the council to, you know, stick to their yeses, yes, and their noes, no. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
How will you increase the effectiveness as council president in the future?
So, I would tell you, six years ago, when I came onto council, it was a dreadful council. Because it just seems like you were walking into the pits of hell every night. Every time that you got ready to walk into city council chambers, it was like walking into the pits of hell. And some members of council would even say, I started getting anxiety when it was time to go to council, just because of the makeup, the dynamic, and the environment which had been created. Under my leadership, what I would like to create, and I believe that Todd would also like to create that, is we have to have a council president that is going to be respectful of one another, of the members of council. We have seen in the past where people have been cut off, people, even residents, have been buzzed, and the buzzer has went off, and some people have been allowed time to speak past the three-minute mark, and then some people aren't given that opportunity. So, we have to make sure that everybody's going to be fair, firm, and consistent. And that is what I want to be. I want to create an environment where people feel welcome, people feel that they can come to council to resolve their issues, their problems, and that their voices can be heard. Because at the end of the day, we work for the taxpayers. The taxpayers don't work for us. And so, one thing that I would like to do is make sure that we spread love, that we spread, have open dialect, where we can communicate effectively, but ultimately, that we have respect for one another, even if we don't agree on a certain subject or a topic. But at the end of the day, that we can walk away knowing that we did what was best for the citizens of Lima.
Mr. Gordon, anything to add? Mr. Dixon, anything to add? Next question is for Mr. Dixon. What can the city of Lima and the Lima City Council do to improve community and police relationships?
Community and police relationships, one thing that I believe that we can, first, what we have to do is, we have to get these positions filled. Because I believe that we are down 10-plus officers, which equals about a full shift of officers, or shift that of officers in which we utilize to service our residents and citizens of Lima. And so, one thing that I would like to do is to focus on making sure that we get adequate and effective individuals that will be willing to make Lima not just their home, but making sure that it's safe for all to be able to work, live, and play. When it comes to building the relationship between the community and environment, I believe that our current chief, Chief Angel Cortez, is working really hard, not just with safety services, but also with the mayor and his department, to make sure that we commence those relationships. One thing that you have seen me do over the past several years is I've been educating individuals throughout the city of Lima, is if you have a problem with our police department, you do have a person you can call. That is your city council, that is your mayor, that is also the police chief. You also have the right to file a civil complaint by going down to the police department, getting the form, filling it out, and having it notarized and resubmitted back for an investigation. And then, you can also have follow-up conversations with that. One thing that I've seen myself do over the last couple of years, especially when we had high-profile incidents here in the city of Lima, is I've just simply picked the phone up and called the mayor or called the police chief, and I said, "Hey, I just simply want to see the audio. I want to hear the audio, and I want to view the body cams." Because at the end of the day, we do realize that those body cams were put into place not just to protect our officers, but also to protect the citizens in which we deliver a service to. So, many of those relationships, again, goes back to having effective communication. And when you don't have effective communication, there's always going to be a breakdown in a relationship.
Mr. Gordon?
Could you ask the question again, please? Read it.
What can the city of Lima and the city council do to improve community and police relations?
Yeah, well, as you can tell, I don't talk as long as Jamie with my answers, and I'm not saying anything bad. But, community policing, we need to bring it back. Community policing went away quietly during COVID. There really wasn't a whole lot of conversation about it, but it went away. And we need to bring that back, because that brings the individual police officers into our neighborhoods, and folks get to know those officers. So, I'm a proponent of it. I was years ago, and I still am, and I think that answers your question pretty simple.
Mr. Dixon, anything to add?
Yes. So, I'm not going to say that pinpoint, I mean, community, CLP officers was not effective. But what I will say is, we're still effective by making sure that we're patrolling the beat. We're able to commence those relationships. I remember when my mom and dad bought our house on the corner of Second and Hughes when I was six years old, and I'm 35 now, right? So, when I was six years old, there was an officer that patrolled the beat. He wasn't a CLP officer. He was a regular officer that patrolled the beat. And his name just happens to be Tigler. Tigler lived in the area, worked in the area, and we knew Tigler. Even up until the end where Tigler got ready to retire, we still knew Tigler. At the end of the day, when we were having family cookouts and barbecues, Tigler would get out of the car, play a couple of basketball with us, throw a football, throw a baseball ball with us. But ultimately, he got a hot dog or a piece of chicken, and he got on the cruiser and went about, because that was the relationship that Tigler had built with the constituents in the area in which he controlled. And so, I believe that we could still do that, same model of building those relationships by having police patrol of the beat.
Mr. Gordon, anything to add? You both have had the opportunity to campaign in the past, four, five, six years ago, and campaign recently, and interact with community members. What have you learned while campaigning for this office?
Am I first?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I actually learned anything other than God controls my footsteps. I've gone to the door of people that had issues and problems. Last week, I sat in the living room of a lady that had issues, and I'm not going to talk about her problems. But I sat in there for an hour, and she cried, and she cried, and she cried. And she said, "I'm sorry you're out there campaigning. You want to be out there campaigning." And I said, "You know what? The Lord brought me here because you needed somebody to talk to." You know, that means the world to me, because God's using me for what He's doing. So, I mean, whether Jamie or I come out, whoever comes out ahead, it really doesn't matter. You know, what matters is the things that happen from day to day. You know, I've knocked on doors and come across people that have had problems, that are going into the hospital, and, you know, worried about their property flooding, because it flooded before, you know? And being able to resolve that issue before they went into the hospital. You know, there's many things that you benefit from going out and talking to your people. You know, Derry Glenn told me years ago, "Get out and talk to your people. Get out and knock on doors." Even when you're not campaigning, you know what? He's right, because you get out there and people need you. And that is why I do the job, whether it's from the first ward or the presidency. I'm there for people. And I'll tell you, you know, there's nothing about power that has anything to do with it. I just love being there to be able to help somebody, to be able to walk the footsteps that God leads me in. And, you know, it's a blessing every day. And there's more and more of it, because I'm out there doing it every day, day and night here during this campaign. So, it's actually something that I enjoy. So, thank you.
You. Mr. Dixon?
Yes. One thing that I've learned while being on the campaign trail then and now is that people want to be engaged. People want to be a part of the citizen's participation. They want to have more citizen's participation. And when you look back at previous, when we did engagement with communities, Mayor Smith went on a citywide tour for a whole summer, asking individuals what they would like to see in the Better Together Plan. And these things came directly from citizens. Even just recently, as this past cycle of CDBG dollars, one thing that I had proposed to council about three years ago was having a citizens' participation board, or advisory board, where we could actually hear from the citizens versus us as counselors, nickpicking about a little drop in a bucket. And so, what we did was we created an advisory board that allowed citizens to come in. So, each council member got one choice of a citizen to come in and be a part of this board. And it made it a seamless process. And it made it a seamless process of handling CDBG dollars. They reviewed the applications, they came back with the recommendations of where this money should be allocated, and we allocated it to those respective places. Because we saw that the residents had a say-so in it, and they knew better than anybody where they would like to see these indices or these monies go for these entities. So I am learning that individuals, yes, they're having problems, yes, they're having issues, but they want to be more engaged. And that is the reason why I think and believe that once I am council president, we can take council on the road, especially through the spring and the summer months, and making sure that we're able to hit every neighborhood, or at least every ward, so that we take local government to the people, for the people, by the people.
Mr. Gordon, anything to add? Mr. Dixon? We're down to our final three questions, and we will have a wrap-up at the end, so just putting that in our candidate's mind. Mr. Dixon, this will be for you. It's been talked about earlier, but what specifically can be done to give young people more to do or more opportunity in our community?
I think we answered the first part of that question with making sure that they have something to do. How, what I would say to the respects of how, what was the second part of that question?
How do we provide more opportunity?
How can we provide more opportunities for young individuals in our community? I'm going to speak from a young professional standpoint. Because when I returned back to this Lima community in 2010 after completing college, I came back home and I managed a hotel that was brand new, which was the Holiday Inn and Suites on the east side of Lima. I would not have had that opportunity had IG, IHG, or the Sterling Company who was managing it at that time, had picked and chosen to rehire the retire, okay? And so, one thing we have to get rid of in our city, as well as in our organization, is a person that has been on the job in a senior-level position for many years, and then we allow them to retire, and then we go back and we rehire them. When we do that, we lose our young population. We use our, we lose our young professionals, because what we're telling them is that they're inadequate. Your training is no good here. And so they end up going to the likes of Cincinnati, they end up going to Columbus, they go to Cleveland, they go to Toledo. And then these individuals, they thrive in professional atmospheres when we could have obtained them here, trained them, taught them what it needs to be, so that when the position came available, we had someone to be able to take that place. And so we're seeing that across the board, when we see individuals that are retiring, and then we allow them off for two weeks, and then they go for a temp agency, and then we rehire them, with the same salary, if not more, than what they left with. And so they're double-dipping. So we need to create a culture where, once those individuals retire, go ahead and retire. Get you a mat, a cup with an umbrella in it, and relax. You've done your labor. Allow someone else new with innovative ideas, thoughts, and a different way of thinking come about to perform the duties of that job.
Mr. Gordon?
I am going to ask you to repeat the question, but I do want to comment on what Mr. Dixon said. I concur with that 100%. You know, my union background as union president, I've always been against that retire/rehire effort. And he's right, we need to eliminate those and to prepare jobs. But could you repeat the question?
Sure. What can be done to give young people more opportunity in today's culture in our community?
Yeah. Truthfully, that's, you know, that's a good question, but that's not a council, that's not really something that council does, other than provide the funding for things like a new swimming pool, and encourage a business to come to town, and help, by creating tax incentives and that kind of thing, helping businesses. And that's basically the only role that city council has in something like that. But, thank you.
Anything else? I've kind of lost track for a moment.
It's me.
It's you. All right.
It doesn't matter. Just go with the flow.
I think it's actually Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Had to take a second to regroup. When you think about your years of service on the council, what has been your greatest achievement as a member of Lima City Council?
Well, I talked about it before. My greatest achievement is the relationships that I have with the people in the first ward. The greatest achievement is answering that phone call and being able to help someone. It's not one time, it's many times, and Jamie understands that. When people call, and the administration is really great, you know, they, folks call you with needs, with critical situations, and so you, you know, you talk to the administration and you say, hey, listen, can you help me? You know, you respectfully talk to them and say, hey, I got a situation here with this resident. Can we look at this? And I've seen these guys, I remember leaving the public works director, the current one, a message on a Friday afternoon, and he called me about 7:30 on a Monday morning. He was out there looking at the situation that I brought before him, you know? So, you know, I think that the relationships that we have with the individuals in the ward and in the city, and how we're able to help, that's the one biggest accomplishment. And probably, at the end of the night, I think all the other counselors like when I remind people to be good to each other. I think that's probably a pretty good accomplishment, because I think it's helped set the culture of the current council, that we have, that we know how to treat each other, and we're very respectful for one another. And I hope that it, you know, I imagine that it's not a thousand people watching GTV2, but I'd like to think they are, and I hope that it could just get out there into the community to be kind to one another and treat each other like we should. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Mike, you said accomplishment or achievement?
What has been your greatest achievement as a member of Lima City Council? And you can speak to accomplishment as well.
So my greatest achievement of being on city council is servicing and serving as a public servant to the residents of the city of Lima, from the first ward to the fifth ward to the seventh ward. Because we do know that some people don't know who their council members are. And so, they may call Nepr at the middle of the night, they may call me in the middle of the night, they may call Todd in the middle of the night. Long as somebody answered, they just want their problems to be solved. And so, again, it is getting those calls in the middle of the night, and you have to get up out of your bed, no matter how warm your bed is or how cold it is. You have to get up, you go see about those residents, so you see them at their worst of worst, but you see them at their best of best. And so, when those issues and concerns are resolved, and you can ride around your neighborhoods, you can ride around your ward, you can ride around your city, and you can see the positive effective change happening through our community, that is the most rewarding part of this position. It is not the pay. If anybody is ever getting into the politics for the pay, you're in it for the wrong thing. So it is genuinely wanting to serve and make your place of living, or the community in which you live in, a better place for all.
Mr. Gordon, anything else?
No.
Mr. Dixon, anything? So this question will be for Mr. Dixon. It's our 20th of the evening, and it'll be our last question prior to the wrap-up.
Okay.
We all have strengths and weaknesses. The president of the council's job is multifaceted, team builder, financial manager, voice of the people, economic development, law and order, ensuring Lima's growth. Name your, look at your own strengths and weaknesses and tell us which you will be best at and which will be the most difficult for you.
So one thing that I'm very great at is communication. As you all can tell, Mr. Gordon told you earlier, I've taken a long time answering all the questions this evening. And so communication is my strength. Advocating is my strength, just because I worked in years of social services. One thing that I can say is my weakness is caring too much for people. I always want to see the good in people, and my wife tells me this all the time. No matter where we go, no matter what we run into or encounter, I always see the good in people. And I just believe that that goes back from the foundation in which my parents laid for me, the foundation that their parents laid for them. It is simply just loving people where they are, and teaching them. My grandmother sits in this audience tonight, guys, and one thing that I've learned from my grandmother is, my grandmother had two children, right? Which is my mom and my aunt. But over the last 20-some years, she's opened her house to 250-plus children that is in foster care system. And so we just love loving on people, giving them a better opportunity, giving them a better look out at life, because we know that we are blessed. And one thing that we have been blessed with is much is given and much is required. And so, that is one of my downfalls, is knowing that I just see the good in everybody, no matter what that is. But how I would utilize my effective skills of communication is making sure that we can corral the council to do the right thing, especially if there's something that we need to make sure that gets done, especially in a deadline situation. But ultimately, we want to make sure that we're doing good, not just for our own personal benefit, but for the benefit of those in which we serve.
Mr. Gordon?
Well, personally, one of my strongest features is I work well with others. The administration, the mayor's staff, I know how to talk to them. I know how to, it's how I talk with everybody. When I worked at the prison, I talked to inmates the same way that I talked to the administration. I go in there and I talk to them with respect. I don't go in there demanding things, and I don't go in there slamming my fist on the desk. I go in there and I create the relationships, because it's not something that I'm trying to do, it's just natural, it's just how I was raised, it's how I do. And so, communication is a very important role, and how you respect others and how you treat others. So that would be one of my strongest features. And, you know, like Jamie, my passion for people and my belief in them as well, might be considered a weakness. That's all I have.
Mr. Dixon, anything?
Nope.
Anything else, Mr. Gordon, on that topic?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are now, at the time when we give two minutes, closure, kind of wrap-up, comments from each candidate, Mr. Gordon will go first. As we give him a couple minutes to kind of capture his thoughts for a second, I'll just make a few statements. Want to again thank Lacknip and St. Luke's Lutheran Church for hosting and sponsoring the event, and want to encourage you all to make sure that you get out and vote in the not-too-distant future. What is it, the first Tuesday after the?
November 7th.
November 7th, right? First Tuesday after the first Monday in November. And both vote locally and on the national issues. So with that in mind, Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. I prepared some for the closing statement. My ability to work well with others and be respectful, as I just mentioned, is very important to the role of city council president. The experience both on council and during my work with regional planning, I am also retired, and I have much more time to devote to the position as city council president by attending any daytime meetings, and being able to attend important daytime events as the city council president should. Now, the title of president, this will not be my first time being called the president of anything. I've been president of sports teams, of sports leagues, church board president, and yes, union president. In which I, during my time as union president, I made groundbreaking changes to the way that the state of Ohio and the OCSE state employees union structured seniority and correctional facilities that are merged through institutions. But, you know, council president is not a role to take lightly. As council president, you are the backup for the mayor of the city of Lima. And God forbid anything ever happened to any mayors, especially the one that we have now. But this role, you need to take the experience in city government that it takes to do what is required. You need to be a strong communicator, you need to work closely with the administration, as well as other entities, such as commissioners and the township leaders. You need a passion, as I do, for people, and to understand that even though you are a leader, you are a servant, there to help the community to have a healthy, peaceful existence here in Lima, Ohio. You need to lead with love and care about all those around you. And finally, as I leave every meeting, I just want to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you and God bless.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Thank you all for being a part of tonight's conversation. Let me reintroduce myself. My name is Jamie Dixon. I hold a bachelor's degree, a master's degree in business administration with a concentration in a public administration. I have served city council, serving the fifth ward for the last six years. But for the most part, the best moment that I would like to take this time, I would ask each and every one of you to close your eyes with me and journey back as we journey into your own child neighborhoods. Let's think about your neighborhoods when you and your friends played in it, how people took pride in their neighborhoods, residents knew and looked out for one another, yards was well-manicured, the aroma of flowers smelled the blocks from blocks away, and the sounds of children playing in the neighborhoods was like sweet melodies to the ear. These memories hold true not only to you, but they hold true to me. For at the tender age of six, I witnessed my parents purchase my father's childhood home and rehabbed it with the money in which they, blood, sweat and tears, and doing the work themselves. As time passed by, we noticed that those neighborhood families had moved away, they either downsized or their children moved away and never to return, robbing the neighborhood of their sense of pride. I believe that I am most qualified to be the next council president, not just because of my educational tenure, but not because of the service that I've serviced on city council, but also my years of, but ultimately, my years of social services to this community and advocating for individuals, old, rich and poor. I believe the reason why I am running for the current seat to become your next council president is because I will fight for innovative and practical solutions for new and old problems, by bringing multiple generations together to make sure that this city has a place for all generations to live, work and play. So together, we can strengthen our Lima pride that we all have stored deep inside of us. By restoring that pride, I would like to make sure that we tackle blight and revitalization, education and youth development, work job force development, and taking care of all of our seniors, but ultimately making sure that we can provide a safe and clean neighborhood. So when you go to your ballot on November 7, I ask that you check Jamie Dixon for the next city council president. Thank you and God bless.
All right. So as we finish up tonight, a reminder that the forum will be replayed on public access spectrum channel 1021, starting in mid-October. The forum is being streamed live on the Lima Allen County Neighborhoods in Partnership Facebook page. And lastly, I would like to give a round of applause for both candidates for their commitment to the city of Lima. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, nicely done.
Thank you so much.
Nicely done, sir.